Call ourselves to order for the work session of the ASD School Board. Today is Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. It is 3:06 PM here in the boardroom. Present in the boardroom are members Lessons, Jacobs and Bellamy. Present online are members. Present online are members Holloman and Wilson. Member Higgins and member Donley will join us as they are able. We have an agenda in front of us now that we've called ourselves to order and engaged in a roll call. Our first item today going in reverse order will be right sizing B2. Dr. Bryant, any opening remarks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll ask our team come up. What we'd like to do is to present a final presentation to the board to discuss what we've heard from the community. We can review survey data that we've also received on the right sizing initiative. And the idea for this afternoon is to ideally answer any remaining questions from board members. You have all that you need to make an informed decision later tonight. I'll let the team get situated and then they will begin.
Okay. Good afternoon. We've got pretty much anyone up at the table, I think, that might be needed to answer your questions. If there's something we can't, of course, we have a whole slew of experts behind us. So just as a, as a reset, this year's right sizing area had three focuses. One was allowing available space to be used for childcare operators, boundary adjustments for middle and high school, and of course, the two school consolidations. Quick rehash of the history since really going all the way back to fiscal year 10, but, but since 15 and 16, we have closed five schools and we closed them because we have had declining enrollment across Anchorage. We have had declining birth rates, not just across Anchorage, but really almost globally in, in many areas of the world. So we still have a significant amount of capacity to hold nearly 50,000 students. And of course, we're down to 42 and some change.
And just a reminder of what the recommendation is for this school closure. The first one is the Fire Lake Elementary School consolidation, where we would send less than five students up to Chugueck Elementary School, about 41 students to Birchwood Elementary and a vast majority of 143 to Eagle River Elementary School.
So there'll be a couple of us talking on this one. We'll just go through some of the areas of feedback that was really stated multiple times, either in emails or public testimony or comments during the community conversations. One is when you look at Fire Lake, there was a boundary change after the 2018 earthquake. And it was because we had Eagle River Elementary Schools, schools split up into multiple other schools. And that boundary did not change back. Interestingly enough, when I, when I looked at it, the bigger drop for Fire Lake, you know, there was a plus up right after the earthquake when they picked up Eagle River Elementary kids. The biggest dip really was 21, 22, and that was the year that the school district remained closed. While, while many other districts remained open and they lost like over a hundred kids right after people started realizing our district was not going to open up anytime soon. And it really was a trend all across the district, not just Fire Lake. But it is true, we did not change that boundary back. Second, and, and this is common across the district, we're always concerned, all of us for, for students with needs. And, and Fire Lake is a CEP school, has free breakfast and lunch. Eagle River doesn't, but when we do the math of the, the economic disadvantaged status students that we'd be going to Eagle River Elementary, it would be pretty simple to pull them into a group and ensure that that becomes a new CEP school.
For the SLC program, the, the community feedback was that we shouldn't be moving it to Berchwood because there's a different curriculum and there's no fence to prevent students from running out into the highway. As the SLC program will be taking the CKA curriculum that they are using currently at Fire Lake to use with the SLC block at Birchwood. However, one of the things that we think may end up happening is that our SLC students actually benefit from a more structured ABC curriculum. So that might be an avenue for them as well. And as far as the highway goes, it's actually a lot closer and easier for an elope student to go from Fire Lake to the Old Glen than it is to go to the, the Glen Highway from Berchwood. And Jim actually walked that with some Birchwood staff last week. And pretty much, we don't think it's going to be possible for the students to actually elope all the way to that highway.
Everything would have to go wrong. I mean, everything. I walked out with staff. If they can get over the fence to get to the trees, there's a lot of underbrush they'd have to go through. It really didn't seem like a very likely scenario. And then if they made it through the tree line, they'd have to go up a pretty steep hill. And it, again, we've looked at schools all over the district when we look at putting special programs into them. And every neighborhood school has a street or, or a main road somewhere near it. This really didn't seem to be a, a very likely scenario. Whereas at Fire Lake, they could just run down the road and go straight onto the Old Glen. This, I, I just didn't see that was very likely. But on the next one, and, and I do welcome board members to go out there. I'm sure you've been to a lot of our schools. You know, when I pulled it up on Google Map, I was worried. That's why I went out there. It looked like it was right there until you get on the ground. And then of course, it's a much different scenario. So that, the other comment about Eagle River growing and, and interestingly, it's accurate. Eagle River, it, it did decline a little bit. When you add in the Chugueck area, there has been some population growth over the last five to 10 years. But having said that, what hasn't grown is the number of students in Eagle River. Even though they may have seen a 2% population growth, the declining birth rate's real. And when you look at from 2010 to 2025, Eagle River has still lost 800 plus students, even though there is a slight gain in population. So when you, when you look at that and then you look at the housing area that's being built near Fire Lake and you look at the apartment buildings that are being built closer to the highway, it's really hard to imagine how many families would have to come in with an average of 1.3 kids per family now for the younger families. It would take a lot of housing to bring back 1,000 kids. Or we would have to, to have a population boom, which we're not seeing nationwide or, or even worldwide as younger couples struggle with financially and, and for other reasons, they're just not having the numbers of students. But I, I do want to cover that and, and acknowledge that they're correct. There has been some housing built. There's plans for more. They have grown a little bit in terms of overall population, but it just has not gone that way with our schools. And then the last one brought up, I think this was during one of the, well, both community conversations. They, they're right. Fire Lake, if it didn't close, would be a good location for commercial childcare. It's centrally located to downtown Eagle River. You know, what we've, we've seen over and over, this is our third time that we've done school closure recommendations and discussions and right sizing is that there isn't a school where in any world, they can't say, but if that other school next to me closes or re-boundaries, then my school will be full. And, and while it, while that's true, we could re-boundary every school in the district and have the exact same number of kids. And all you're doing is making another school smaller to make another school bigger. And, and you know, they're, they're all being honest when they bring all these up. These are legitimate concerns about free breakfast and lunch because we didn't talk about that in public. We hadn't done the math yet. We did it a couple of weeks ago and realized that we can make Eagle River Elementary a CEP school if it closes. But then there's all these other unknowns. I mean, if you look at Fire Lake, 45% of all the students in that boundary zone out. If you look at Lake Otis, 53% of all those students zone out. So even when we make a new boundary change, if a school closes, we're still giving parental choice. And, and we don't know that they're really going to choose the school that, that we're putting in that boundary or make it an individual personal decision. So, you know, it was, I, I liked the community conversations. You know, I think I learned a lot about both schools and communities. I think the whole staff did, and, and these were our biggest takeaways. And again, that's Eagle River. I didn't do one for Lake Otis and all the schools in that area, but it's really a similar trend. ASD lost a lot of students when COVID first kicked off. Some came back, we had a bounce back. And then when we, we kept our schools closed, they just didn't come back and they never did return. A lot went somewhere, homeschooling, private schools, whatever. And so we, we, we just didn't see coming back to normal, whatever normal is.
I'm going to jump in really quick to note that member Higgins joined us at 3:11 PM.
All right. So moving to Lake Otis Elementary Schools. Recommendation, we are recommending that just a few kids move to Airport Heights. A little bit more goes to College Gate, about 25 to Rogers Park. And then moving down to the lower, the southern part of the boundary, looking at about 37 students going to Tudor Elementary and about 125 going to Cassoon Elementary. With that move, Cassoon's SBBS would move to Ocean View, SBBS program to Ocean View. And looking at that, moving from Cassoon to Ocean View, one of the things I do have, Senior Director Pam Momley, who is our Senior Director of Special Education Instruction up here with us. We did have some questions about how, with the number of different programs and moving and how do we, where are we at with, with SBBS, with SLC and life skills programs? Because one thing I did not mention when we were talking about the Fire Lake is we would be looking at moving this SLC, of course, to Fire Lake or to Berchwood, but we would be moving their life skills program to Alpenglow Elementary School. One of the things that we are looking at with this SBBS is to be able to get all the students into Cassoon. We would be moving that SBBS program over to Ocean View. One of the things people have brought up is it's unfair to these programs. Well, in our elementary schools, 24 of our elementary schools have either SLC, an SBBS or a life skills program. So it's getting to the point where we have, when we're looking at schools and doing recommendations for consolidation, a lot of our schools have these programs. And a lot of these schools have these programs because we have had an influx of students that need these services. And we've had to open up more and more of these different classrooms. And where do we open them at? We open them where there's, and there's actual quite a bit of room in the schools. So our schools that are less capacity or have more capacity in them end up getting these programs. So when we're looking at the, the schools that we'd be looking at with foreclosure, many of these schools that would be looking at foreclosures have an SLC and SBBS or their life skills program. So in this recommendation, we are looking at moving the SBBS program from Cassoon over to Ocean View. We did have questions about, well, what about the MSDR, the multisensory room? Well, we would be putting a multisensory room over at Ocean View. We would have enough classrooms. They're in a good spot of the school that we've identified. Staff have gone out, spread staff. Jim Maintenance has gone out to look at what would it take? And it's a very doable situation to have SBBS go to the Ocean View. Also, one of the things that we do know is that the SBBS kids that are at Cassoon do live in South Anchorage. And moving to Ocean View doesn't really make it further apart away from their homes. In many cases, it'll make it closer to their homes. So the bus drive, bus ride would be shorter for some of the kids. So the next one is question or concern was about Lake Otis being a Title I school and Cassoon primarily not being a Title I school. With this move, we anticipate it's going to be very close. We do not know specifically for sure, but it's going to be very close if Cassoon will become a Title I school. That determination happens in January when we go through the whole system and determining what schools will have what percentages. They'll be close. We don't know for sure if they'll be at the cut or not. It is one, and, and, and a lot of that has to do with, we don't know for sure which parents are going to choose to go ahead and send their kids to Cassoon and which will choose another choice program that we have in this school district. Lake Otis has a 21st century after school.
Mr. Gustafson, I'm going to interrupt briefly, just to, in the title school status. Could you explain to refresh the board's memory as well as any public who are watching, how title status and free lunch for students are connected? And what does an elementary school actually receive for their title status in terms of extra funding? So take apart meals for a moment. What does that look like?
I'm going to have Mike Webb, our new director of title programs come up. I think Jim might be able to answer the question better about the, the meals and I'll let him answer that question.
The meals aren't tied at all to Title I status, but generally, a Title I school would have a high number of economically disadvantaged students. So is almost certainly going to be a CEP school. But we can also pull non-title schools into the CE program, which we do. In fact, we added another 13 schools this year. And frankly, it's turned out we've sold 200,000 more meals already year over year with 1,000 less students. So CEP is different. You can put groups of schools and try to get to that 40% economically disadvantaged status. You could take a 70 and a 30. And that's what we've been doing for the last several years is refining it so we can get more meals out to students in need. So it's, it, it is completely separate. Cassoon's already a CEP school. So the fact that it's not a Title I school doesn't mean that students would go over there and have to pay for food. They wouldn't.
And Mr. Webb, would you comment about what it means to qualify for Title I? I believe that was the question. Need to push the.
Thank you. Annually, we will look at the percentage of economically disadvantaged students. We want to balance the, the need with having enough money in the schools to make a difference in terms of the programming. So we currently have 31 Title I schools. And we look at the cutoff. Anyone above 75 will automatically cover. Our current qualifier is 69, if they're 69% free or economically disadvantaged, they, they're a Title I school. That number varies from year to year based on where we want to make the cutoff.
I think that's good information. I apologize. My original question was what, once the type of school is designated as a title school, what does that actually get them? As a parent, when I heard title school, the visualization occurs that it's a wealth of supports, that it's additional training for all staff, there would be specialized training. That it's additional training for all staff. There may be specialized training that everyone receives, um, additional staff, additional supplies. And practical purposes, what does it look like to, for a title school at the elementary level?
Title One schools, so as they're qualified, there's, um, we have a pot of money. That goes to the schools and that gets divvied up. And then the schools, each school has to come up with a school-wide plan to address their needs. They'll all do a comprehensive needs assessment to look at their academic progress, other needs within the community that they have. And, and that will base, all those things that you mentioned could be part of that plan. We have things like extra, extra para supporter. A lot of our money right now goes to extra teachers. Unfortunately, there's not teachers to fill some of those positions. There's consultants that come in, um, title schools will, will pay for extra training. A myriad of, of things in an elementary school, counseling services are a big part of that as well.
So, or Lake Otis, the, I'll give you a dollar amount. Lake Otis gets just over a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And they're about middle of the road, um, right in the middle, if not a little towards the bottom end, I believe, just below. No, I mean, like if you took a median of the number thirty-one schools, I think they're in the mid, midsection of.
That's, that's correct. Yeah. I, I just wanted to add another service that Title One schools receive, um, as a part of their Title One plan is a lot of family engagement. So you'll see a lot of family nights, um, a lot of family outreach to engage parents, um, really holistically in their child's education. So that's another part of those title plans.
It, it is true though, that there are people who believe that it's significantly more money than that. It's really a very small portion of the budgeted amount that supports that school. If you look at, you know, a really small Title One school at less than two hundred kids, it's, it might be close to a hundred thousand dollars. It's not even enough for one teacher. It's, it's. It used to be back years ago, before we started adding middle school and high schools to, uh, title schools. That, that this one pot of money really got spread, um, at the elementary level. There, there were significantly more resources per school. As you started adding, uh, the larger schools, it kind of thins it out like everything else that you do where. You know, now there's five thousand more kids or ten thousand more kids that spread out that, um, amount of money you get. So it's, there, there is a belief for a lot of people that the reason they're a CEP school is Title One. And I can understand why they would think that, um, but it's, it's separate. And the amount of money that I've seen year over year, um, go into titles, it does change every January. I think it's fence sits down with the team and they decide the cut. So year to year, it can certainly change.
I'm going to ask one last follow-up question. I see a member Lessons and member Holloman have raised their hands as well. We're talking about a hundred to two hundred thousand. What's the average budget at the elementary level? I know I could find it, but.
Um, generally for the gen ed side, it's about, you know, two and a half, three million, depending on the school. It could, some be more, some be less. That doesn't include like the special ed services that might be at the school or some of those other programmatic things. But just the direct budgets at the schools about two and a half, three.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll go with member Holloman and then member Lesson.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to ask if we make this transition to a school that's not Title One. Certain Title One services and, and benefits would go away for a period of time? I, I'm trying to imagine what happens at the destination school. And at what point, when it qualifies, would things be restored? Sorry if I'm not asking that very clearly.
Potentially there's a break in service. Gladys Wood was a Title One school last year. They're not this year. And it, it just depends on enrollment and how things go. So, um, if, with respect to what would happen with the money from Lake Otis, if, if neither of the, uh. Two schools that might qualify, qualify that that would, that would be dispersed among the other title of schools. Or it would, um, trigger us to consider lowering the threshold so we could add more schools.
I'm going to jump in. I think member Holloman's question, and I'll go back to him to see if I have it right, is if, for instance, a student at. Lake Otis was going to Cassoon next year, um, due to the repurposing that building and Cassoon, um, becomes title to non-title, from non-title. Would the, would that title status take effect in August or would it be part of the way through the year?
It would, they would, they would write their school-wide plan, uh, in the spring and their, um, their title funds would be available next school year.
Member Holloman, did that capture your question? I, I think I tracked it because it was of interest to me too, or would you like to?
Yeah, you clarified it very well, except on the answer, are you saying that they would write their plan this coming spring for this coming fall? Or would it be the spring and fall after?
We, we identify the schools, uh, for Title One in January. And then we start the process of helping schools with their, uh, with their planning process for the following year. So they would write those, the plan this spring, so it would be in effect for next year.
We would, we would have, we'd be calculating that percentage. If the, if Lake Otis was to close, we would then be able to calculate the percentage of which students. Cause we'd have names of those students that would be pointed towards Cassoon. And if, if, when we do that, the percentage is at the level that the cutoff is, then Cassoon would be Title One. If not, it would, it would, it would not be Title One. A lot of the times when we look at those schools right at the, right at like the cutoff, sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. Sometimes we can put them on probation for a year and fund them. Sometimes they're like Gladys Wood is off now. They're, they're, they're a school that goes up and down.
Thank you. Uh, member Holloman, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Member Lessons.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. Well, one is just a, a point of information that, um, in the back of the budget book. We have a page that tells you how much title funding every school gets. And so, um, you can look on page four forty, uh, for detailed information. But my question was actually about the multisensory de-escalation rooms. I'm aware, um, that, you know, they are north of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Or at least that's what the price tag was when we approved, um, their creation a year and a half or two years ago. Do we have a cost estimate for what a new MSDR would be? And, um, what fund body does that come from? Is it a general fund? Is it capital? I know we're not bonding for it.
You know, I walked over with the capital plans team and the maintenance team and the instructional team over to Ocean View. And we looked at the spaces available. It would be very similar. It had the same kinds of things at Cassoon. In the classrooms with permanent, um, structures where kids can climb on, which we don't like. And, and other things. So it would probably be pretty similar. And my expectation is we would be looking at the major maintenance grant funds that haven't been expended yet for that purpose. No.
Not general fund?
They're Fund Three.
Okay. But in the ballpark of three hundred thousand, give or take interest?
We think, um, you know, we've got to rip, we've got to rip out. We don't rip out. We carefully, um, disengage sinks and, and ovens and stoves from the areas. And there might be some plumbing that has to be covered up in drywall, but you're not looking at, um, significantly more than frankly, what we spent. Standing up AK choice in our, in our schools.
Member Lessons, does this satisfy your question? Perfect. Member Bellamy?
Just another clarification. Once a Title One, Title One schools do not automatically get that every single year. And I think some, there is a, uh, I think a misunderstanding that that is like, uh, a given to some schools. So, um, am I correct in, uh, saying that? No school is guaranteed Title One status. It's until certain pieces are met.
That was actually true with Nunaca Valley last year as well. They could have either been put on probation or lost Title One status. Because they had finally dropped below what was probably going to be a cut line. And if, if it's a school that's extremely high, it's probably not going to lose it. But, but all of those in that, that near the cutoff, one or two percent, it, it could go either way.
And I, is by my, this chair, one more follow-up? So, uh, say kids who are going from Lake Otis to Cassoon, they, and we don't, um, they don't meet the Title One status. Can somebody talk a little bit about how we, how we will guarantee that they get the services that they need?
So when we're looking at moving more kids into school and filling that school, we are looking at being able to provide more staffing at that school because they're full. We'd be able to have the multi-classes at the diff, at the same grade levels. We'll be able to fund probably like counselors and. And we're looking at specialists that are probably going to be on staff full-time instead of coming and going and count, uh, I said counselors. But then also like the, all the support personnel for special education could be there on site. So there's other things that we do when we have a full school, right? And we still provide really good education in a school that isn't necessarily title funded. When we're looking at Lake Otis in particular, this year, the only money they've expended is around, um, uh, consultants. Because they were trying to get a counselor and the coun, they couldn't find a counselor this year. So their funds are being looked at and trying to figure it out. So there isn't a lot of like one-on-one support right now at Lake Otis for actual title funding. They are, they didn't fund an extra teacher or anything like that. So when they go to Cassoon, and if I, if I can say some, one thing, we have put kids at Cassoon. Cassoon is a very, they, they know how to transition kids into their school. I don't think we've heard from any of the Abbott Loop families about anything negative about the transition into Cassoon. And these were the same kind of questions we were having about Abbott Loop. Was it three years ago or so, four years ago? So, you know, you know, we, we provide in those schools. And one of the reasons why we're doing this right sizing is provide more in a bigger setting for more kids.
Yeah. Could, could I also just add, um, some of the services that are being provided at Lake Otis aren't necessarily tied to title funds either. One of which is a, a mental health clinician from our community in a partnership. And, and that partnership could continue at a different site if it were, were closed. And additionally, um, English language learners are, um, there's a large population of students in that program, um, as well as Indigenous said. Those services follow kids where they go. Um, and so you would see a lot of those staff positions that are not necessarily even title funded. Following students with, with the needs that they have to their new schools. So.
Getting back. Oh no.
Before we resume the presentation, we have a new round of questions, but I want to note for the record that, uh, member Donnelly joined us at three thirty-two. Welcome. We'll go with member Wilson, then we have member Higgins and then member Holloman.
Yes, thank you. And, um, forgive me if you've already covered it, but please reiterate the difference between. Or, or again, or the connection between Title One, schools that receive Title One status and the free and reduced lunch. Because i, i, it, is it directly correlated or are they two separate programs? Um, and how do they work? Uh, how would they work for these students that are moving or that would, would be moving if the school's closed?
They're two separate programs and the percentages required to be free breakfast and lunch or CEP school is far lower. Than the cutoff for Title One. So that's why we have forty-seven of our schools in the district. Forty-three a, as CEP schools, but we have far less Title One schools. And in both of these cases, both Eagle River and Cassoon, Cassoon's already a CEP school. Um, and Eagle River would become one easily.
Okay. Um, member Wilson, does that answer your question? All right. We'll go to member Higgins.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please proceed with your question.
Thank you. Um, uh, I, I did get feedback from Cassoon of some issues, but it was during the first semester. And after that they adjusted with, with issues there. But I want to go to like, like, like Otis. How long has that, Lake Otis been a Title One?
You have an answer for that. Do you know?
I, I don't know exactly, but I've been, uh, principal in the, was in the school district for close to twenty years and they were Title One the whole time.
Okay. So that's, uh, we talked about other schools that may become Title One and they may not maintain Title One. But it's pretty confident that they're pretty high number and they'll probably be there. When I, when I, the, the other question is what I got feedback from is that when they're not, when they're Title One, all the kids get a free lunch. You don't have to go and qualify and that sort of approach. And a lot of parents that are eligible for it, don't put in for it and they have problems with it. And when you got that many kids with Title One, it makes a difference. Does that seem pretty accurate to you?
No, actually the, the, the ability to be a CEP school is the total aggregate of a group of schools. And you can have groups of two through the entire district in one group, has to be forty percent. You can actually drop it to thirty-five percent, but you lose a significant amount of revenue. Because you get less per meal on reimbursement rates, the lower that percentage is, certainly below forty. So we take all of the schools in the district from really like twenty-nine percent on up. And we make multiple different groups and go through this numerous times in order to maximize the amount of revenue. That would come in while increasing the number of CEP schools. So that this school year, we increased by thirteen schools. And so it's a lot easier to ensure, just like we did with Cassoon. When Abbott Loop closed, we made sure Cassoon was a CEP school. It wasn't difficult.
That wasn't my question. If I can just make clarification, if you're a non-Title One school. It, the kids that are in income level eligible can get, still get free meals, free and reduced meals. They get that, but only if the parents complete certain documents. And one of the concerns that's out there with staff is that the parents are not so inclined and low income, it's, it, it happens. Not inclined to do it and share stuff to become qualified. Is that, is that an accurate description?
Well, we have probably twice as many CEP schools as we have title schools. So if they're coming from a title school, it's always going to be a CEP school. And if they're going to a non-title school, it could still be a CEP school, which would be the case for both of the, the, uh, the big gaining schools this year. But yes, you're correct. If they go to a non-CEP school, doesn't matter what the title status was. And they didn't, uh, qualify for CIT or SNAP or TANF. Then it's true, they would have to fill in, fill out an income declaration form to be able to qualify for free and reduced. I don't know how I stand.
Member Higgins, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think it's confirmation. I think, you know, the fact is if they go to a school where they're not automatically eligible for a free meal. And a lot of parents don't put in for it, that that becomes an issue. And that's all I was trying to make a point out of. Thank you.
All right. Uh, member Holloman. Member Holloman.
Thank you. And I am just trying to understand this in a more general way, not specifically about these closures. If we have a family that would count towards a school being Title One, but they're in a non-Title One school. Does that mean we get no federal, extra federal assistance for that student? Do they have to be in a Title One school for it to bring more money to the district?
If, if they qualify for free and reduced, we don't get additional funding for them just because they individually qualify for free and reduced meals. They do get some other benefits though, which is waiver of student activity fees and some other things. That aren't federal government related, um, because naturally, I mean, I, I think we've been through this before. If you play in a sport or an activity, you're more likely to come to school. And so you get a double win by allowing them to play sports.
Sure. Let me ask it a slightly different way. The revenue we get for Title One from the federal government, does that come based on the number of schools we have above a certain threshold? Or is it based on poverty of family in the district as a whole?
Uh, Mr. Holloman, I believe that's based on the poverty in the district as a whole. So the total number of kids that would qualify for the Title One funding we would get. And then as a district, we disperse it to the schools with the highest need. I think there's different models you can take where you can do like a per kid model and push that out to schools. Or you can aggregate it into districts with a certain threshold of, uh, economically disadvantaged students.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Here's, we have no other questions, so we can resume.
So, go, let's go back one more. The one thing we haven't talked about is Century Twenty-One. Lake Otis does have a Century Twenty-One program, and that's one of the things that came up in the community. One of the things about Century Twenty-One, if you remember last summer, Century Twenty-One was one of the things that the federal government pulled, and then put back a week later. It is a federal-funded grant program. Our Century Twenty-One, we are actually at a point where we have to reapply. It's, it's an application period of a five-year program. And ours, we apply during March and April this year, and we will learn about our status in June. So, we aren't necessarily at a point where we can say which exact schools, because we don't know how much money actually we would get.
Member Lessons.
Maybe I'm totally wrong. Didn't we just have a memo at the last meeting dealing with Century Twenty, Twenty-First Century Learning Centers and the placement of one at Lake Otis for the forthcoming summer?
I believe there's two grants with the Twenty-First Century program, and they're kind of on different cycles. So, it might be the second grant.
Ms. Beltran?
Yeah.
Do you know, Mike?
We have two grants. One is up for renewal this spring. Lake Otis is a part of that, so that would be a reconfiguration or a re, we'd, we'd look at need and potentially identify different schools.
Okay, but just to clarify, at the last meeting, didn't we affirm support for the forthcoming summer Twenty-First Century Learning Program at Lake Otis? Or am I totally off base?
I am going to have to find that out, Ms. Lessons, because I don't know that unless Ms. Beltran knows.
Yes. Yes, we did. It was on the last.
For the summer? Oh, that was for the summer program, yes.
Okay, so no other questions. Does that complete our slide? Okay.
We have just a few more. Just a reminder, one of the memos tonight is around the Romig Middle School and West High School boundary adjustments. The first one is Romig Middle School to Wendler. Just a reminder, those students south of Tudor and to the west of the highway that would normally go to Romig, but from Rogers Park Neighborhood Program would be going to Wendler. And then, the other one is the southern part of the Taku Boundary, which, I mean, the northern part of the Taku Boundary, which has been, has been going to Romig and West. We would be asking to move them to Hanchu and Service. There's the Seventy-Sixth Underpass under the highway. Now allows for a faster bus busing to Hanchu and Service. And it would put the whole Taku Elementary Boundary feeder into Hanchu and then Service, so they'd stay together through their careers.
So, about, oops. So, about a year and a half ago, we did a community survey. We did one after, we talked about it after the community conversations, and we got about three hundred people to respond, a little over three hundred. But, so this covers the three hundred that, that took our right sizing survey. And as you can see, about seventy percent of them didn't attend either community conversation event. And there's lots of reasons why they, they couldn't have attended, to include transportation and other things. But, so you will see a lot of questions where clearly people didn't have an opportunity to meet with individual board members and/or district staff. But we did want to put out the common themes for this survey. And then we'll go back and talk about, later, if the board wants to, the last survey, which was about six thousand something respondents, which was a significantly higher N-factor. So, I, I think there's, there's some positives in that the concerns people have really have stayed somewhat consistent over the last four years. They do continue to want clear, consistent information throughout the process. Their concern really is on the impact of communities, and that's just a truth that we're never gonna escape, nor would we want to. Every school we pick is gonna be the wrong school to somebody. And every school that ever makes it on a list, that group of families and, and staff, their, their feelings, they're absolutely valid, because it, it changes. It, it makes change. And honestly, making change occur is, is difficult in small organizations. It's even more difficult in large communities and, and within schools. And we've definitely seen that over and over and over. The consolidation effect, there is the confusion about class size. School consolidation doesn't affect class size. Budgets affect class size. Because more resources go with students if the funding remains the same. And, and that's something that maybe we just need to message better, differently in, in future community conversations, because that does seem to be a concern, and, and it hasn't gone away. So, I don't think we've really gotten that word out very clearly. The boundary concerns, you know, people are always worried about, well, if, if you were to just change that other school's boundary, I would have more students at my school, and then my school wouldn't have to change or close, and then the other school could close. That's always gonna be true. We can do boundaries all day long and make all these changes, but it's the same number of kids at the end of the day. And, and there's winners and losers when it becomes, how can we change boundaries? That's why we pick the schools first through a very methodical process, and then the boundary follows. Whereas, if, if you're trying to, you know, keep your school from, from closing, of course, you're gonna want the boundary first, guaranteeing that you can modify the process. But, but we did on purpose do that last. And, and of course, there's, there's always gonna be desire for ongoing engagement, and those who say, why don't we make a decision next year or three years from now and see how things change? And, and, you know, I understand that as well. You know, I've, I've talked to the city planner about the Eagle River housing projects and about the apartments that are being built. And, and it's possible in three years that, that there's gonna be more housing in Eagle River. And, and I agree with it. It's certainly possible that that could happen. I'm also seeing that even though Eagle River's population has continued to grow slightly, unlike Anchorage, as a whole, the number of students has continued to decline because of declining birth rates. So, it's really difficult to try to know for sure what will Eagle River look like in terms of students in five years? Because if you look at eight hundred students, you'd have to build a thousand houses to make up for that. And, you know, really haven't seen a clutner with their twenty-seven-hundred acre plan? Go beyond concept. So, it, it just doesn't look like it's something that's looming in our face over the next many years, that we're gonna see another eight hundred kids come back to that area. So, we left on purpose, plenty of time to ask questions. Some questions have been forwarded to us already, so we're prepared to respond at this time.
Not seeing anyone else in the queue. Right away, I'm gonna jump in and ask a more thirty-thousand-foot question. I, I don't know that the board and administration have ever publicly discussed what the need for this process is in terms of overall scope, of capacity, the number of buildings we should be looking at. Can, can administration articulate now in a world where there was consensus in our community, a hundred percent consensus in our community to include this board and administration on right sizing and to reduce the number of buildings in our footprint to align with resources, funding, and student population? How many elementary schools do we need to potentially address through this process?
So, it's a, it's a tricky question, because some of the schools that you look at, like Gardwood, which is so far out that you really couldn't reasonably transport them in a forty-five-minute window to elementary schools. If you were a deed, you would say, look at that square footage, that must be corrected. Obviously, we're looking at other ways to correct those, those available spaces that might be open to provide for district and community needs. But if, if you're sitting up in Commissioner Bishop's office, you're gonna see that we have by their one hundred and fourteen square foot per kid, eight thousand square feet of excess, which is about twenty schools, if the average school was about a four hundred-person school. But of course, that doesn't account for any of transportation, and, and the whole Beam Me Up Scotty thing is just not here yet. So, we rely on buses. And, and so, when we looked at it, I showed this slide, I don't know, a month or two ago. And, and we went through the, the top fourteen, fifteen schools that were under sixty-five percent. And, and again, I, I know you wished it was a straightforward answer. If we did not want to do childcare in any schools, which we intentionally made as part of the right sizing plan, then you probably would realistically be looking at three to five schools on this year's list. We put two schools on this year's list, so we could still have childcare opportunities. And as you can imagine, when we look at closing a school, pick any school, and now we start looking at all the other schools that have space, once we put them down as a potential gaining school, you can no longer consider a gaining school as a closing school. So, you can't just close too many schools all at once, because there's no gainers to be found. And that's where it goes back to Heather and Courtney and transportation and, and the forty-five-minute three-tier bus system that we have. So, in a perfect world, last year, we could have closed three or four schools, but we didn't. So, we came back again this year as directed, and we, we have two other schools. It was two because of the childcare possibility. If, if the board doesn't like that, then, you know, the real number is probably somewhere three, four, because we've got to make room for, you know, the surprises like this year. We found out four weeks ago, maybe from Pam, that twenty-seven kids had been tested, and we're gonna move into pre-K in January, that we did not have three classrooms established or set up for. So, we have to have this internal capacity to make decisions based off this growing need population.
I'm just gonna ask a quick follow-up for clarity, then I see Member Higgins has his hand raised. I understand that the deed lacking context, just from being at the thirty-thousand-foot level and not having a local understanding, would, would say twenty in a year, and that would be the end of it. And I'm tracking that we think we could, in theory, have had the capacity to address three to five this year. Is that our entire need? If we, if the board had received a proposal to right-size five buildings, would we need to address the matter again in a year or two? Or would that align our resources with the student population and specific location factors?
So, one of the biggest problems with closing schools is transportation costs. Andy's gonna brief you on the pro forma about this year's property valuation in Anchorage, or last year's, that, that increased by one point five billion dollars, that now puts the muni's tax cap directly underneath the amount of money they have been giving us. So, we're gonna lose about one and a half million dollars toward transportation that the muni has been providing over the last many years. Because the tax cap will have been met, and they can't give anymore. And it's because in the required local contribution, which I'll let Andy brief as long as he wants, in a couple of weeks, that, that we're already gonna face now, and we didn't know this until just the last few days, another one and a half million dollars, just because we've reached tax cap. So, at some point, hypothetically, being able to build out transportation, knowing that the transportation deficit is over fifteen million dollars a year now, that really is a real deal-breaker for looking at, what's the most schools we could close? We just can't afford more buses at this point.
Perfect, I think that's good information for us to know. We'll go to Member Higgins, then Member Lessons.
Thank you. I, I'm curious whether or not you received or got any notice from a clutner in regards to their plans, because I received an unsolicited phone call about a week ago in regards to a clutner, for the individuals involved. And he said that the first quarter of this year, of next year, they are going to be submitting plans for ninety acres of construction with homes, and then they're gonna expand beyond that. Have you got any information in regards to that?
I know when I talked to the city planner, they've also heard that there may be a plan coming from a clutner to replat seven hundred of twenty-seven hundred acres that they currently have for a combination of commercial and residential land. I will tell you though, that I also briefed the board several years ago about a clutner's plan, and it, and it hasn't moved forward, and it doesn't mean that it won't. But they've had this land for many, many years, and, and there's still nothing even conceptual yet on the two thousand acres. And I don't think they've submitted the concept plan for the seven hundred. Nobody knows what their timeline is. But it's certainly possible someone on the inside would, would know of something, but it's not public.
Yeah, they, they indicated it would be after, the, the first quarter of next year, they're gonna forward with it, it's gonna identify immediately ninety acres, but it's gonna be beyond that also as well. So, that's why I'm curious whether you have seen that or not.
Thank you, Member Higgins. We'll go to Member Lessons.
Thank you. I was able to share with the administration a few days ago, maybe last week. And it was a, I appreciated the chance for the conversation, that I've really been wrestling with the concept of underutilization in relation to how schools are utilized. And when I say that I'm struggling with how schools are utilized, I'm really thinking about program, schools that have multiple programs under one roof. We have wonderful choices. We've been told that more than a third of our families choose a school that is outside of their zone. Our choices include open optional programs, Montessori programs, language immersion programs, and I'm sure I'm overlooking additional choices. But I'm specifically thinking about schools that house a neighborhood side and a special program side. And that's not something that right sizing has addressed. By the best of my knowledge, we have one school with sixty-seven kids on the neighborhood side. We have another school with a hundred and six kids on the neighborhood side. Another school with a hundred and twenty-four kids on the neighborhood side. Another with a hundred and twenty-eight. Another with a hundred and seventy-four. These are all small, another with a hundred and seventy-two. And numbers change day to day. They're all smaller than either Fire Lake or Lake Otis. And so, one of the directives in that December memo was to reduce combination classes among elementary schools. And I can, I can sense at a certain level that this would, you know, has the potential to reduce combo classes, you know, through the Fire Lake and Eagle River Union. I'm a little less convinced that it would do that with the Lake Otis proposal, because kids are being sort of fractured in multiple ways. And I think we're probably talking about a PTR increase next year, in February, of I don't know what. But that gets me back to the kids on the neighborhood side of a lot of our schools of choice. And I just feel like that's, we're not talking about it. And I think the question that I have is, do we need, whatever happens tonight, do we need to continue to have a conversation about how we're going to serve their needs prior to the passage of the February budget? And maybe that's a question that's unanswerable at this point in time, but I wanted to lay it out there that I think we're gonna have to figure out how to serve those kids' needs, because I don't see us having three or four dozen holdback teachers next year.
I think Andy did the math and can talk about, for those two affected schools, what a PTR of four would do to actual staffing.
Right, and there's kind of an anomaly with Fire Lake, because, one, there are like a very few students there. This year, they're budgeted for six teachers at one per classroom, so which is probably a good minimum to have, frankly. But even with a plus four, they didn't have, through the metric, they didn't lose any, because one, they were about two students away from getting a seventh teacher, according to the model. And then, you know, a plus, I mean, taking off one teacher is like a little under twenty percent of that, for that, for that school. And so, four plus four PTR is not quite that either. So, it didn't quite trigger an extra FTE loss at Fire Lake until a plus-five PTR. And then they would go down to five teachers and not even have one per grade level. For Lake Otis, they would lose one teacher at a plus-four. And I believe they had ten or eleven to start with.
Not seeing Member Lessons follow up. I'm gonna follow up. I feel like what we're trying to get to with, as a conversation is- I feel like we're, we're trying to get to with, as a conversation is maybe a different philosophy in terms of approaching closures. And I don't imagine administration spending a significant amount of time with this. But I guess just off the cuff, is it a viable plan for our community? And for, from district administration's perspective to start to, I'm trying to find the right word that's appropriate. I've centralized in various parts of our city optional programs. And so I'm thinking like, should all immersion programs be in one building? And approach building closure by having fewer combined programs to provide a higher level of service that way? And is, I, I guess I'm curious, the nexus between that and like transportation costs, is that a better way to reduce our footprint?
Well, I could start the conversation. I do think that there is some need to look at those dual seeded programs from a staffing perspective. As member lessons indicated, we have small neighborhood sides of many of our dual enrolled kind of curricular programs at an elementary setting. So immersion is one of those models. Open optional can be another. Montessori at Tudor is another example. And what, what we tend to see is if the optional program in that elementary school is very popular, then you see a very small footprint for the neighborhood program. Government Hill is a prime example of an immersion program. There are not enough students on the neighborhood side of the program to have a full classroom of each grade level. So you see multiple combination classes on the neighborhood side, while a majority of the students attending that school are in the Spanish immersion program and have both their Spanish speaking teacher and their English speaking teacher as a part of their program. It does create inequities, I would say, in terms of PTR. Because what tends to happen is that optional program has very specific training that's needed for those teachers. And then our neighborhood classes either are a combo class situation because of the numbers or potentially do have a higher class size. So I do think it, it would behoove the board to start looking at those things as, as we, we start evaluating programs.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Just want to check in with member lessons. Does that help?
It is for member lessons.
Oh, thank you.
Can talk to her in a minute this moment.
Yeah, I, I think that the question for me is what is that process going to look like? Because I don't think we can delay the conversation another year. Because February is a couple of months from now. And I think the urgency for those 67 kids or those 106 kids is real. I mean, my sense is that they're already in combo classes this year. The PTR increase that I think we're poised to see, I mean, we're getting talking to like K through three combo classes on the neighborhood side for, I mean, I, I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you would even teach. I don't know how we're going to staff our schools. And, and quite frankly, that was the intent in my part of collaborating on an amendment last December when it's, when it said that the recommendation should prioritize student outcomes by reducing combo classes among elementary students. Because I was aware that schools with special programs had kind of been held harmless for better or worse in the prior right sizing process. And I, I kind of did, I looked at a lot of numbers and enrollment data last year. And that struck me as a problem and now it's a bigger problem. And so I guess my, my call for urgency for the board is that we're going to have to find a process to make a plan for these kids. And it may in my mind look like right sizing 2.0. I don't know whether we need an ad hoc committee to start, you know, 8:00 AM tomorrow on this. But I, I don't know how we have staffing conversations about a lot of our schools and connect it to the budget. And we're not going to have that conversation tonight, but this seemed like the best opportunity to at least say, we have a red flag here and we need to pay attention to it because we need to do right by all of our kids.
Yeah, I, I will offer just two thoughts based on, on what you said. One, I don't necessarily know where the right starting point is. But I do, I do think when we're looking at right sizing our district and a decrease in enrollment, while also balancing our community's want and desire for choice. It, it's a hard place to be, right? Because we are, been used to as a community, having lots and lots of choices. But the number of students coming through the door is decreasing, but we still have the same number of programs essentially. And so I do think there needs to be some sort of look at how that looks through the right sizing process while still honoring our community's desire for choice, which is very evident because the numbers tell the story, right? That our, our parents and our students do choose different programs. It is a discussion that we have quite often around the right sizing part of things on the instructional side of the house and, and in terms of staffing. The second thought I would say is that both Sven and I, you know, based on the board's allocation of additional funds for holdbacks this summer, we did a very concerted effort to look at those combo classes this year so that we didn't have like a K through three situation like you were talking about, unless it was designed as a part of a Montessori program as an example. So I don't think that we have an emergency today. What the budget looks like next year is, is a whole nother story.
I'd just like to point out, it takes about two months plus of prep to get ready for the first meeting for the school board to start a right sizing initiative. There's, there's no realistic timeline where we could be ready by the end of January with a 2.0 plan that we could address in February. And the amount of effort it takes, it's, it's much larger than you would probably imagine. And, and it's district closure. I'm just being realistic.
I'm going to follow up on the follow up I had, then we'll go to Member Bellamy, which I guess is, I, I, I think this conversation where it's going is asking the question of, is it viable to combine optional programs in a building and consolidate the number of elementary students into fewer buildings? But then we're not running two programs and in theory should be able to do so more efficiently. That concept, which is the, the only obvious solution I can think of, I would imagine will seem problematic with a number of families in the same way that this proposal seems problematic to a different set of our families. The other challenge I see, you know, talking about a transportation deficit and why charters have a hard time is because they're centralized in one location in a district that is disproportionately large for its student population. And so do we think that's a viable proposal? And I think that's, it's good to recognize and identify that tonight because if it's, if it has its own set of challenges, that's another lens that I hope our board is using to identify as we evaluate what's in front of us. Thank you.
So maybe I could just respond to that, Member Jacobs. I, I had multiple programs in my middle schools and high schools that I was a principal of. And you, and with larger setting, it was manageable, but there were things you had to take away from each of those programs because you couldn't offer everything to everybody. And especially at like Romeg Middle School. When you get to a smaller school, even like elementary, if you have two programs that have different philosophies in the same school, it's hard to schedule them into the schedule. It's hard to make sure that those philosophies are, are solid and continue as they are. Example, you put a Montessori program and a ABC program in the same school, it's probably not going to work out too good for you. You put two immersion programs in the same school, maybe a, say the Chinese immersion school and a Spanish immersion school. You now have to figure out how in, in that school, in that small environment, how you're going to be able to focus on all of the different cultural needs for both of those programs. So we have to, for us to go do this, we have to look at it holistically. And at some point, like Kirsten said, maybe we have to start reducing the number of choices we have since we've had so many less kids.
So I'm just going to clarify one last thing. I guess I'm talking about the idea of not, not eliminating a program. If we want to keep all the programs we have, but reduce our footprint, does combining special or optional programs in one building and then consolidating the number of general population elementary schools into a different and fewer set of buildings, is that viable? The board, I imagine the board could choose to vote to reduce the number of programs, but I don't know that I see that as something that I would imagine of seven board members will support. And so I'm specifically focusing on reducing footprint versus reducing programs.
The staff can certainly look at that. I, I think it's going to be a pretty detailed analysis. And, and again, not something where we, you know, say, this is a crisis right now. We're going to spend the next three weeks and be done with a plan. That's, that's what's not realistic.
Okay, Member Bellamy.
Member Lessons, could you, you, you were giving the numbers in the dual enrolled schools? The 67, was that the, how many kids are in the building? And what does that 67 represent? In, don't give me the name of the school, just the enrollment.
The overall enrollment of that school, when I, oops, when I checked, edit undo, was 408.
408 kids in the school?
Total, yeah. And 341 were on one side and 67 were on the other.
And the 67 were the neighborhood kids?
Yeah.
In the, in the combination classes?
I, I don't know what they're stacking.
We don't know what class they're in.
I just know that based on the enrollment data dashboard, you can just click on different buttons and get a sense of how kids are enrolled. And so that is to the best of my knowledge from publicly available data, which changes all the time.
Thank you.
No other questions and we're back at the questions section. So I'm going to jump in with one I made off my list. Regarding timeline, there was a implication that right, beginning a new right sizing initiative isn't feasible if, once we start budget conversations or even really after today, a new initiative couldn't be distributed in time to develop and distributed in time to be adopted in a budget. Could the proposal in front of us be postponed until closer to the budget's decision this board will have to make to provide us additional context on what schools will look like with the proposed budget? I, I don't know that our, I, I think there's maybe a, a sense that isn't entirely accurate that we've, we summon our community that the decision is between operating all current schools and to include Lake Otis and Fire Lake at their current capacity. And those schools ceasing to operate as neighborhood schools. That it's that binary and I think it's a little more gray. And so I'm hoping linking those two conversations a bit might provide some context. But is that even realistic in terms of timeline?
When we, when we build the budget, we have to know which schools we're building it for and what the staff allocations. So if it's roughly 900,000 per elementary school for the BPO through the principal, do you build two budgets, one with those two schools existing and one with those two schools not? Because then the five gaining schools for Lake Otis and the gaining schools for Fire Lake, you would have to do those separately. I don't know that it, I don't know that we're going to get anything from a legislature to firm up numbers, knowing that they don't even start session until after the second weekend, January. And I think when the board's voting on the budget, there may be some bills on the floor, especially the bills from last year that almost made it. But, but then just couldn't get over the finish line. But you're not going to see significant movement by, you know, the first board meeting in February, which is when you see the budget.
Okay, we'll go to Member Higgins. Then I think I have one more question on my list. Member Higgins.
Let me just say that, you know, I, I think the budget we do for February is going to be totally redone hopefully when the legislature does their thing. So that's kind of up in the air anyway. My question is, this being right sizing versus downsizing, right sizing was presented to us as a change in philosophy that we're not trying to close schools. We're trying to make sure they're fully utilized. And we talked about childcare, the 8,000 slots that are there. It seems like closing, let's say, Lake Otis, for example, is going to reduce our ability to do that. Right now they could do four classrooms in there by, by my review. They could dedicate that. But with this right sizing, we're going to, we're closing one school. We're going to probably, I don't see where we're going to be increasing our capacity to right size. I do, do it as downsizing. Where am I wrong?
Member Higgins, could you restate your question in five seconds or less for the administration?
Yeah, what's the difference between downsizing and right sizing in this situation? This looks like it's just downsizing, it's nothing being doing. It's, it's going to reduce our ability to deal with childcare issues, it's not going to improve it.
Oh, I can answer that. So right sizing this year does include childcare, it does include boundaries. But by board directive last December, when the board voted and told us to come back with more school closures, we typically follow the board's directive. And so that's why we came back with schools to close.
Thank you, Member Higgins. I'm going to ask my last question and then we have another agenda item to get to. I think it was brought up today as well as in some public testimony, the number of schools which Lake Otis elementary students are going to be distributed to. If the board were to approve the proposal for Lake Otis, are those student population distribution numbers final? Is there something that could be done to reduce the concern that a school, that a student body that was once cohesive is now going to be broken apart?
Last year, our first glance at New Nacavale was going to be at a few different schools. And then we were able to, since Baxter didn't close, we were able to move them all into Baxter. So I believe that we can still look at that and take a little analysis on buses to see if there's, if it's doable. Because what's in the deal now is something that we know we could do with busing and not cause a problem with that.
If, if there were, I mean, would administration support, I don't know, board request to begin that officially as part of like an amendment to the memorandum?
Can I add that when we closed Lakewood last year and we thought that X number of students were going to go to Turnagain, that ended up not actually being that number. So even with Lake Otis parental choice at Lake Otis is in the 50 plus percent area. We don't know that those parents would all go to Cassune. At, at 50 plus percent, that school is alive and well with parental choice. So you have the plan. And, and then when the enrollment comes in at the next year, you find out that, that choices were made and they went to different schools outside it. So when you look at, it is five schools, but the less than five kids that are up in that north end, they're so much closer to the school they're going to be going to, that they probably would go to that school. That big, large group, you know, whether they choose Cassune or they choose to go to Tudor, which is not listed on here, or whether they choose one of the other choices. All right, well, no, not when that big group comes down to Cassune. Those parents could be choosing other schools that aren't, you know, that are in that general area. And so sometimes you don't know until August.
One of the things when we were doing the analysis on this, we were looking like at Tudor. And we figured out how many students could fit in Tudor because of the seven preschools that we've added into there. So to do much more is going to be probably a, be problematic. To do the one or two differences, that's probably more of a busing issue. So I, I'd probably recommend leaving it where it's at for now, just because of those things.
Okay, knowing that the plan could change, that's helpful. And Mr. Anderson, I agree with you that the, the students, the few students in the corner of the zone almost certainly would, I certainly would. I still think there's something to be said for giving those families an option to have their students stay with their peers if they're willing to, to put in that work. With that said, and not seeing any other questions. With that said, and not seeing any other questions from the board, we'll consider this agenda item completed. Thank you, Dr. Bryant and everyone for making time for those questions. I think it was a really helpful conversation. And then we'll call forward our other agenda item today, which is the team behind the application for Ocean's Charter School.
So while our guests come up to the podium, I'll just reiterate, this is the first time that the board has reviewed a charter application in quite a while. So just as a reminder, it's typically a process for the board to have opportunities for a work session between the applicants and the school board. Um, and that's what will be happening today as the initial step in a process to review their application to be a charter school. So thank you for joining us and please begin.
Just for, for our record, if you could identify yourselves by name and then, you know, welcome.
Michael Dickerson.
Beth Busk.
Simon Rose. I'm a teacher at Highland Academy currently.
Teacher at Stream Academy.
Subnurse, subteacher everywhere, nurse by trade. Do you want to run the slides for me? Okay. Um, so yes, we are a group of parents and teachers. Not all of us could be here today. But we have been working since January to build what is now known as Ocean's Academy. Um, it's an outdoor charter for environmental arts and natural sciences. Um, we, we began this whole journey with a great big idea of what we wanted it to be and we've narrowed it down a little bit to what it is now. And so Ocean's Academy is a high school charter serving grades nine through twelve, which we hope to be located in East Anchorage. Students are provided an environment that facilitates innovative, hands-on learning as an alternative to traditional public education. Ocean's Academy emphasizes outdoor experiential education, arts, natural sciences, and project-based learning across all aspects of learning. And we acknowledge that every student is different and therefore learns differently. Education is not a one-size-fits-all and Ocean's Academy recognizes that some children learn better through experiential education and Ocean's creates an environment in which these children are better served and encouraged to cultivate a deep lifelong level of learning. In an article discussing the systematic literature review surrounding the effects of experiential learning on learning outcomes, it was found with overwhelming evidence that experiential learning has a positive impact on improving a variety of educational aspects. These include improved academic achievement, critical thinking skills, collaborative abilities, motivated learning, higher order thinking skills, problem-solving skills, self-learning readiness, et cetera, from elementary to high school level.
Folks, I'm gonna have you just a second. I'm gonna call a brief innings here.
Taking a break. How long would you love?
Two minutes.
Okay.
And we'll call our work session back to order at four thirty-eight, four thirty. Okay, please resume. Thank you.
Okay. Um, at Ocean's Academy, we prepare students to think critically, collaborate effectively, and lead with purpose. Our vision is Ocean's Academy empowers students to develop resilience, confidence, and leadership through immersive outdoor experiences and project-based learning, enhancing community and environmental stewardship. We've created a Venn diagram to show our how, what, and why, which is arts and natural sciences, project-based learning, and outdoor experiential. Our mission is Ocean's Academy empowers students to develop resilience, confidence, and leadership through adventure, hands-on learning, outdoor exploration, and arts and sciences-focused project-based challenges that foster courage, collaboration, and community engagement. With a strong emphasis on environmental stewardship, our program fosters a deep connection to nature, inspiring students to explore, protect, and engage with the world around them. Through adventure, collaboration, and community involvement, we equip students with skills and mindset to make a meaningful impact. Our values are experiential learning and ecological stewardship, arts and sciences, education and innovation, adventure and exploration, community engagement and service, collaboration and teamwork, courage and reflection, college career and life readiness skills, purposeful use of technology and systems thinking. And we will talk about outdoor experiential learning and why it's important. Um, hands-on experiential learning engages the whole child through improved motivation, curiosity, and real-world understanding. It boosts academic and cognitive growth. Students show better focus, memory, and problem-solving after time in nature. Active hands-on experiences lead to a deeper comprehension and knowledge retention. It enhances well-being and social skills. Time outdoors reduces stress and builds confidence, collaboration, and emotional regulation. This, we feel, is especially important in a society and world that focuses and relies so heavily on technology. And it bridges learning and life. Real-world sensory-rich contexts help students connect abstract classroom concepts to authentic experiences. Um, project-based learning, why it matters, it deepens understanding by students learning by doing, connecting knowledge to real-world problems and authentic inquiry, encourages critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration rather than rote memorization. It improves academic outcomes. Research shows higher achievement and retention in project-based classrooms, especially in STEM and literacy. Students in project-based learning demonstrate better long-term knowledge transfer and application skills. It builds future-ready skills such as developing communication, teamwork, and problem-solving abilities aligned with 21st century workforce needs. It increases engagement and motivation. Hands-on choice-driven projects increase student ownership and joy in learning. Integrating arts and natural sciences, it matters because it creates, it fosters creative and critical thinking. Integrating arts across curricula enhances observation, experimentation, and innovation. Core skills and science learning encourages students to see connections across disciplines, promoting holistic problem-solving. It boosts academic achievement. Students exposed to both arts and sciences show higher achievement in STEM subjects and improved conceptual understanding. Engaging multi, multiple modalities such as visual, kinesthetic, and auditory strengthens memory and comprehension while ensuring that the educational needs of students with all learning styles are met. It inspires engagement and curiosity. Art-infused science lessons make abstract concepts more tangible, visual, and emotionally engaging. Encourages wonder, imagination, and inquiry, the foundations of scientific exploration, and it develops the whole learner. Integrating the arts nurtures empathy, communication, aesthetic awareness, which are skills vital for ethical and creative scientific advancement. Let's see, enrollment and sustainable growth plan. Um, our goal has been to open in the fall of twenty twenty-six, which I'm told is quite ambitious. And I say every time, that's great because so am I. In our first year, we aim to have a hundred students enrolled. These hundred students would primarily make up ninth and tenth grade, which would allow us to build strong academic and advisory culture, establish desire, outdoor experiential learning routines, and develop foundational systems with younger learners. Grades eleven and twelve would only be opened in the event that our projected enrollment for grades nine and ten did not meet expectations. And then this is what we anticipate year two, three, and four likely or potentially looking like. So in year two, we would open up eleventh grade and estimate somewhere around a hundred and fifty students. Year three, we would have ninth through twelfth open and be fully functioning across the grade levels with two hundred to two hundred and fifty students. And in year four, we anticipate two hundred and fifty to three hundred students. Recruitment and retention, we would focus our recruitment on families in East Anchorage who have been or currently are part of Anchorage Stream Academy and other alternative programs who desire a hands-on, project-based education. We believe that a strong and inclusive culture, family engagement and mentorship, and place-based relevant education will ensure academic retention. We've been told since Stream first opened that one of the most common questions the administrative team has received was for a high school option that was similar in model and philosophy. While Ocean's Academy has its own identity and its own program, we believe that many of the key aspects that affect, attract families to Stream are integrated into Ocean's Academy. Furthermore, I have personally been told that families are hearing about Ocean's Academy and intentionally choosing to send their students to Stream Academy with the plan of then sending them to Ocean's Academy. Facilities, I have been in communication with ChangePoint Church who has plans to purchase a building in East Anchorage. ChangePoint is more than willing to partner with Ocean's if we are approved. Um, Ocean's Academy would then partner with ASD to explore options for pre-made sack lunches to address the nutritional needs of enrolled students. Additionally, Ocean's Academy has begun to develop our nonprofit parent group called ORCA, which stands for Ocean's Resources and Community Alliance to help supply and provide lunch items and snacks to students as needed. Additionally, Ocean's Academy is interested in exploring the potential of co-locating with an existing ASD facility. In this case, Ocean's would participate and provided ASD nutrition services. We are also engaging in productive conversations with other facilities in East Anchorage regarding the possibility of utilizing available space. We've reached out to a variety of locations to include UAA, APU, other churches, South Central Foundation and ANMC, the Alaska Native Heritage Center, and even the Boy Scouts. We are striving to think outside the box and identify locations that would support the model of Ocean's while facilitating our mission and vision while strengthening community relations with enrolled students. For transportation, we have identified a multi-tiered and innovative model. Ocean's Academy is committed to providing equitable, accessible, and flexible transportation for all students through creative, community-based model. Our, the first aspect on our multi-tiered transportation plan is people mover integration. We would like to partner with municipality of Anchorage so that students can use city buses to reach school. We would focus on areas in East Anchorage, Mountain View, Russian Jack, and Muldoon. Carpool coordination, this is something that Stream has implemented and had success with. It would include facilitating parent-to-parent carpools through voluntary opt-in Google forms, and it also works to build community connections and support sustainability. Another option, especially being an outdoor school, is walking and biking. This promotes healthy, active transportation options and it works with municipality to, and we would work with the municipality to ensure safe routes for walking and biking. Also, because this is a high school, we anticipate several of our students being independent in their transportation. Um, and we would encourage independent travel for licensed students and those carpooling with siblings or peers. We would also like to partner with ASD if at all possible to pilot a collab, to, to pilot a program in which we could use ASD's buses to help get our students to Ocean's. Ocean's Academy is ready to become the first ASD charter to pilot direct district-supported transportation, an opportunity for innovation and equity. To move forward, we would request clarification on eligible transportation funding allocation under the current ASD charter framework, a cost estimate for transfer busing routes from primarily, primary neighborhood zones such as Bartlett or East Attendance Areas, and an opportunity to co-fund a transfer bus from Bartlett and/or East High School to the Ocean's Academy site, creating a neighborhood hub that aligns with district equity goals. If successful, Ocean's will expand to a secondary hub based on the next highest attendance area.
Okay, that concludes your presentation?
That concludes.
Awesome. Thank you guys. Um, we'll start with questions. I see Member Bellamy, then Member Lessons.
Thank you guys for showing up. I appreciate it and all the work you've done. I appreciate the transportation piece. Did you have any conversation with Stream in terms of just extending that curriculum or, and how is it so different that it, that wouldn't have been a, instead of six, eight, you go six through, extend the grades? So how is it different from Stream?
We did talk with Stream about expanding their charter and they felt that it would, they, they believed that they wanted to stay original to what the founders of Stream wanted, which is a focus on middle school, which we respect a hundred percent and have been advocates of that since that conversation took place with Stream's APC. In terms of how it's different, I would say it's like Stream on steroids, maybe. It's Stream for older kids and so there's opportunities for more community projects, more community engagement. They can get out and do more things because they are older kids. And, but, but I would say that Stream and everything that they learn as far as peer relationships and project, you know, team projects and those dynamics is built on in Ocean's to really try and prepare them for what they're gonna encounter after high school.
Yeah, I just, a little bit, I think the logistics are just gonna look different on a high school level. High school students can go much more deeply into projects over an extended period of time than maybe middle schooler may. And that kind of goes also into the independence, it's kind of building off of the community engagement aspect where high school students can engage deeply with the community, especially in the older grades, and integrate themselves in ways that on middle school, maybe they wouldn't be able to. And it creates a lot of effort and a lot of work to do that. And I think in the Stream model, they probably get stretched thin pretty quickly.
So, so a day in the life of an Ocean student would look like what? What would it look like?
You, go ahead.
We are still working on the curriculum and that's gonna be largely up to the teachers and the principal who take over at that school. But if it builds on the model of Stream and the way that we expect, then there would be integration across curriculum. So a project that is being pursued in math is also being pursued in a different way in social studies and also in language arts and also in science. And that opens up the door for us to engage with the community more thoroughly. Kids see the purpose behind the work and therefore engage more, more motivated. What those projects exactly are going to be, I would hope would be based on student interest in much the same way that they are at, at Stream Academy right now. And of course, obviously, meeting all of the standards that we need to meet.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna jump in with a quick follow-up on Member Bellamy's question, then we'll go to Member Lessons. Do you know if, and have you evaluated if, in terms of a place that Ocean's could co-locate with Stream? Does the building have that kind of capacity and will there be interest from Stream's end?
I've brought that up a couple of times now. I think they might be getting tired of hearing me ask. But that's okay. We have talked about that multiple times. In fact, I have been invited to attend Stream's APC meetings and that was one of their APC chair's first questions to me was, have you thought about co-locating with Stream? And the short answer was yes. But as far as I know, at least based on recent conversations, there's not space within the building. And maybe, Michael, you can elaborate on that. I was gonna say, as far as I know, there's not space within the building, especially with Stream's projected growth. However, I don't believe that it is entirely out of the question for relos to be placed on the property, although that would not necessarily be a first choice.
Good, thank you. Uh, Member Lessons?
Thank you. Thanks to each of you. One, I wanted to self-disclose that one of the founders is a former neighbor and I was most recently trick-or-treating with him a couple of weeks ago. So not that that needs to be said in any, I just wanted it to be said publicly. But it was still a surprise. And I will, I will say that I had an initial conversation about what, what the charter process is like prior to the schedule that's listed on page fifty-one. So this is like two years ago. Um, and really the, the substance of that conversation was the importance of backwards planning from when the State Board of Education has their meetings and would need to approve. And so, you know, I commend all of you for the work that has And so, you know, I commend all of you for the work that has gone in to meeting what I assume is an upcoming State Board of Education deadline. So maybe you haven't spoken about that. That would be my first question. What is the deadline that you're aware of and working for with respect to the State Board of Education's schedule?
So initially, we believed that the deadline was in December. However, there's been recent confirmation, I believe, from Robin, that we could go before the State Board in January at their special session. Our, I think, I think if you ask each of us, our timelines might sound a little bit different, right? For me, it's the end goal. We've got to be open by fall of next year. That is the goal. That's the dream. And then, and then things work backwards from there. I would pretty confidently say that we all want as much time as possible in the lottery, and so making sure that we meet the deadlines so that we can be in the lottery, so that we have the most opportunity to have students enrolled and then open next year is, is a big priority for us.
Okay, thank you. So you are thinking about all of those moments in time. I appreciate that. One question that I have, and I don't know if this is for the three of you or for the administration, is that, you know, if the focus is potentially on students who are currently in Stream or other similar but different options, where do those students, you know, when a student leaves Stream now as an eighth grader, where do they go? Are they going to East? Are they going to Bartlett? Are they going? Where are they, where do most of our Stream graduates matriculate to? And if we don't know that now, I guess I would find that helpful information because I would imagine it would pull students away from those particular schools.
I don't have that information. I would guess that they would spread out a good bit. I know of some parents of students in a handful of different high schools, so couldn't say most, though.
I know my, my daughter went to Stream and is a freshman now in high school. She's at Bartlett with, I believe, 10 other Stream kiddos that, that graduated the same, that left Stream the same year she did. But she's got a pretty, I would say, equal, if not slightly more, chunk of friends that ended up over at East, either in their neighborhood side or in the SWS program, and then a handful go to Highland as well.
I think, may one more follow-up, I think. It sounds as though you're casting your, your net, so to speak, far and wide for where you would be interested in locating, whether it's a facility provided by ChangePoint or an ASD facility or UAA, APU, other sites. I certainly see advantages in co-locating within an ASD secondary facility. It's already built for students of that age, often with, you know, lunch facilities, potentially with access to extracurriculars outside of the school day, you know, so you don't need to drive across town to join the basketball team, for example. Have you, have you thought about, you know, current high schools in ASD as preferential? And I'll also say, we have a lot of excess capacity in Chugyak in Eagle River. We have a lot of excess capacity up there. We haven't really talked about that in right-sizeing, but I'm just saying.
I'll be the first one to say I'm not opposed to that if we can get funding to get our kids out there. We did talk about East and Bartlett because they are the two closest high schools. East, of course, has their SWS program, so we don't, we didn't spend a whole lot of time discussing East as an option. Bartlett has come up a couple of times in our meetings about, is there space? Is that feasible? And then just something in the back of all of our mind, I think, is, is how do we, how do we manage co-location with another high school and not lose our identity? Because, for example, Bartlett, Bartlett High School and Oceans Academy would be two separate schools versus East has their neighborhood side and school within a school or SWS, where it is all under East. How can we make sure that we don't lose our identity in Bartlett? Which is not an impossible task, I don't believe. And it is, I would say, now closer to the top of our options and places that we're considering. But we're, we're open to suggestion.
From me.
Yeah.
Having kids head up to Chugyak or to Eagle River presents new transportation challenges. Be happy to work with ASD with municipality to try to solve those, but it would definitely cut down on people walking or biking too. And it would definitely make things different for those who are more adamantly focused on the east side of Anchorage for the sake of equity.
Going to jump in with a question since we talked about transportation. You know, it's interesting. I appreciate your remark about if we could get funding, we could look at transportation for, and make Eagle River, Chugyak possible in terms of a location. State statute provides funding for, for charter students that currently doesn't follow those students like BSA funding. And I am, I'm hopeful that this board will change that, this, this next budget cycle. The reality is, is that funding is going to be woefully inadequate for your needs. And so my question, I guess, is if that funding were appropriated to you, I think it's a few hundred dollars per student. What would you use it for? And how would you address that? The, I, I believe that there would be consensus at this table from our, and I had a great conversation with this group, that there's currently inequity of access for charter programs. How would you use those funds to address that gap?
I would say by referring to our multi-tiered transportation model and focusing on using buses to get students from these areas where maybe it is too far to walk, especially in the winter time, right? Because a lot of our time spent in school is, is during the winter months. And I can say as a parent of a 14-year-old daughter that I'm not super crazy about the idea of her riding a city bus. I'm just not. So addressing those concerns, we would target areas that are, you know, we, we would look at where the majority of our students come from, whether it's the 99504, 99508 area code, and those would be our primary targets. And so looking at how we would use that funding, it would be to, to allocate buses to get students from those areas to school, to Oceans, would be the, the first step in that.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we kind of discussed that might be kind of interesting if, because we already have the bus system going to East. So then we can have another bus leaving from East that would go to the school. So basically supplement an additional bus line just from East to our school. So it would use a hub system as, that's just one possibility that we were, we're throwing around.
Going to follow up regarding transportation and your budget. It's the first charter application budget I've looked at, so we're going through this process together. There isn't a line item for transportation, and I think that line item could exist in theory if the funds follow the student and the board chooses to allocate that the district makes that a policy. I think there's other ways to utilize those funds. I think collaboration and keeping it the district budget, but making those dollars available would also be fun, considering for practical purposes, especially for a new charter program administration is going to be a significant resource and a rock for you guys to lean on. Was there discussion about aside from those funds that via statute are appropriated per student? Was there a discussion about utilizing BSA dollars to provide transportation services, recognizing that the state transportation formula isn't anywhere close to being sufficient? Have you, did you thought about subsidizing transportation in your budget? And what was that discussion like?
Yeah, so for the most part, the insurance issue becomes pretty tricky on our end if we're going to try to subsidize it on the, from the outside. So in terms of subsidizing existing bus lines or kind of adding to an existing structure, for sure. It's trickier if we tried to manage it ourselves.
And I would, I would say that transportation has been a hot topic for us. We talk about it a lot of the time. And it is at the forefront of our mind because we don't want anybody to say, well, we'd love to go to Oceans, but we just can't get there. That is like unacceptable in my mind, right? And so the goal really is, how can we, you know, we've built this, this idea of a program or this program, the foundation of a program that we think is awesome and that the students that we talk to, the kids that we talk to think is awesome, and they're excited and they're ready to go. And it's not even totally existing yet. And, and, and I would say that's, that's the general consensus from everybody that we talk to. And in my mind, it's like, great. So we've got kids that really want to be there, that kids that want to be in school and parents that want to get their kids there. But how do we make that happen? Like, what, what can we do to help facilitate that? And so transportation is, is a, a big, a big topic of conversation for us, for sure.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your interest in achieving equity and bringing down those barriers. Unfortunately, if I were in your shoes, I wouldn't have a good answer to that question either, but it's important. We ask it on record to show how derelict the state has been in addressing the student transportation formula. It will impede your growth as a program and makes inequity baked into your foundation as a program, which is really unfortunate, given your East Anchorage focus. Member Bellamy.
Just a, a question about risk. What, what have been your conversations? I was trying to go through and find, you know, high school students drive, they're going to be all over the city doing their projects. What kinds of conversations and safeguards have you built in?
As far as safety when they're driving or?
Well, not just them driving, but what would be the, I don't know, have you had conversations with our risk management department?
I have not had a conversation with the risk management department. That would be something that we definitely.
One of the differences in my head is that Stream kids are confined to campus. Just like any other high schools, your kids won't be, but they'll be doing, they'll be potentially driving all over the city to, during the school day, not just during lunch, to do their projects, right? And I'm just trying to figure out what that, how that, what that looks like and what risks does that pose, not just to the charter, but to the district.
Yeah, so according to ASD policies, students are not allowed to use their own vehicles for transportation.
So then your, Ocean students will not be allowed to use their vehicles to do their projects during the school day? Is that what?
That is the existing ASD policy.
Okay, and that is what you are, but is it built into your plan is what I'm, I didn't see it.
I don't believe that it's specifically written out in the plan, although that is something that would be added because that is not part of our line of thinking that we would have high school students transporting their friends. Supposed to be going to, supposed to be going to a location.
One of the big differences for me from Stream, and I, I get it. I mean, I think, you know, the kids are probably going to be mature enough to be responsible enough to whatever, but if that's not the case, that's fine.
No, we, we wouldn't. I mean, you, you can only trust kids as much as you can trust kids. So we're not going to tell them to drive each other to a project site and go start swinging hammers. There, there are going to be some safeguards. As far as talking to risk assessment at the district, I think that's just a couple of steps on the road, but it will happen.
That's good. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
I'm going to make, want to make time for member Donnelly's question, but sir, I need you to be brief because we're almost over time, but I want to make space for it. So member Donnelly, the floor is yours.
What patriotic activities would students at Oceans Academy regularly participate in?
Glad to ask that question. Yeah, I think that serving our community and being engaged in active members in our community, helping the elderly, helping the sick, helping veterans, this is part of the community service aspect of Oceans that would be kind of baked into the work that we do. Just give an example, it's like off the cuff, working with Alaska Veterans Museum to take down oral histories of the work that veterans have done throughout maybe multiple wars and their commitment to like the city. And being able to compile that and act as a resource for them is, I see, is absolutely one of, one of the more patriotic things that, that we can do.
Constitution Day offer is a really great option. There are ways to build the construction of a social contract within a class that not only improves classroom management, but also gives them a taste of democracy a little bit ahead of time. So building on what he said. Yeah, community engagement through democratic-led processes at school, I think, is, is going to be a core foundation.
Thank you for that answer. And we're at time now. I wanted to, to thank Dr. Bryant for facilitating the work session today. And thank you for Oceans team for being present with us today. I will work with district administration and certainly your team on a process forward that makes sense for the board, given our workload. And, and I promise that we will see you again very soon and appreciate your making time today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
With that said, it is now time to adjourn for, would entertain a motion to adjourn for executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts.
I move that we adjourn for purposes of legal negotiations, contracts to executive session. Sorry.
I think.
I second.
Yep, we got all the components there made by lessons, seconded by Bellamy. Signal opposition, we'll adjourn to executive session at 5:01 PM. Thank you.